Go ahead and call the meeting to order because 5:06, I apologize for starting a few minutes late. We'll go ahead and raise your attention.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. I will go ahead and hand to you the motion regarding the approval of the agenda. Moving to approve the agenda as presented. Hearing the motion is second, I'll in favor say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the mission statements. Trustee Major, would you like to read the Board of Trustees' mission statement?
She, she had, you said trustee.
Oh, I'm so sorry, trustee Grissom.
Okay, sure, thank you. The Lakeland or the LJSD Board of Trustees is an elected body of community members committed to serving with honesty and integrity, nurturing a relationship of trust. We hear the voice of our constituents and represent their views of our district. We provide oversight and taxpayer funds through fiscal accountability. We govern through developing, upholding, and advancing policy for the purpose of forging an academic consensus. We create and empower well-rounded citizens while respecting parental authority. We promote individualism, nurture talents, encourage passions, and provide opportunities within the LJSD community.
Trustee Parents, would you like to read the district's mission statement?
Sure. Lakeland Middle School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure that every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you. For announcements, I'd just like to, where did it go? Just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are our business board meetings and they're held in public and they are not public board meetings. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for questions and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussions or conversations may take place. Any other announcements? Moving on to public input. Patron Alexander Krezier. I apologize if I didn't.
It's Koshay.
Koshay, I totally apologize, I apologize. Would you mind standing in front of me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
That is a copy of the email sent to the individual.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Alvin Nederkajet. And hopefully you can give me a response this time around addressing concerns of students. I can try and understand the trial of being a leader during a pandemic, especially a leader in education. I can imagine it'd be very difficult. However, it seems there has been no attempt at addressing the current pandemic, but there are no enforced protocols. In fact, the only difference that's been made between the start of this pandemic is now separated desks in classrooms. Your children ignorance led to many problems, I assume you're struggling to find the resolve to, such as running out of bus drivers. I wonder when you're gonna have to tell parents that they have to drive their children to school because there aren't enough available bus drivers because they are all with COVID. Another problem I see is in my school, which is through Lake High School, that there have been multiple teachers out with COVID-19 and that disrupts my classroom experience as well as others. And adding to the stress of trying to find a substitute teacher for two weeks. I want to note that there's already been one school in Iowa that has had to shut down for a week due to the shortages of substitutes and I do not want that to be one of our schools. One final problem I see with your inexperience of leadership is that there have been no changes in the operational policy in regards to COVID trends, even though we are seeing the most severe spike in COVID deaths ever. You seem to take any precautions with COVID in your student life. In case you are interested in correcting your embarrassing attempts to provide a safety for all students in the community, refer to the CDC's website, "Guidance for Schools During This Pandemic", which includes this quote. "Due to a circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, the CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students aged 2 and older. Staff, teachers, and visitors to K through 12 schools regardless of vaccination status." Close quote, "Because I've chosen to care for my school and community, I bought all classrooms into really a box of masks and asked to be reimbursed." Asked to be reimbursed because this district website states that masks are made available to students at the front office. However, masks have not been refilled since last year and I was simply doing what you say you would be doing. I ask this in my email to you, however I ask it again. If you could prevent even a single death in your community in regards to COVID-19, why are you not doing everything in your power to prevent that death? I understand that you've been thinking about masking before, but I encourage you to re-implement it because because you need to care for your community. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I'll need to move on to report to the presentation agenda. The first report is the subcommittee report.
We now have the advisory committee.
Sorry. Somehow, Paul.
We're gonna be having a lot to answer to. So we had our first meeting. We linked in the September meeting agenda at the very top so you could see it in its entirety, but we kind of went through, we went through introductions, we created our norms. We had four parents participate, one was online. We definitely, we asked all of them if they have friends that want to participate or just continue to reach out. We, at any point, any parent can join in. We want as many voices as we possibly can, so several of them said they would reach out to people that they know. So we created our norms, we kind of went through just the scope of what our work is going to be. Some of that scope is, we are having, the next meeting is next Thursday and we're gonna have each kind of program have a teacher kind of go through and just walk through with parents. So this is how you log in, this is what the kids see, this is what the parents see, this is what the students see. We created parent access through like, you know, accounts that they can go in and look and navigate through it. So because so much of it is digital now. So we just kind of spanned out what that's gonna look like, as much information as they could possibly have going through it so that when we come to the data part, they can be a part of that and give us their input. We are kind of tackling two, three pieces, but really two pieces. We have a qualitative component of the math adoption. We're just teachers every month, parents are going to get feedbacks. We broke it up into elementary, secondary, or junior high, middle school, and then parents. And they'll just kind of add the pros and the cons of each of the programs that they're using because we really want that kind of qualitative, that story to be told, that what's working, what's not, if you're having to supplement, if you're having to supply it a lot. So the teachers really felt like that would be imperative to the story. So we have a rubric that we're going to use that will give that quantitative data, but being able to, every month as we're diving deeper, as we're using all those pieces to really dive into each of those components and speak about it and talk about it. And then we have kind of that running record. So we'll have that qualitative and that quantitative piece and then we'll have the data from, we're gonna have a diagnostic test that we give at the end just to see like, what does the, what's, what's, what's yield from those results. So we kind of went through all of that, we went through the timeline. Figure out the time that works for everybody. So we're meeting 3:45, it's the third week on Thursdays. And again, anybody and everybody that wants to come and participate. We have, I think, equal numbers of teachers per program, so I think there were roughly, what, 30 people here? And there will be parts of this that we do that we will separate elementary and secondary just because they are different programs and the conversations will look a little bit different. Parents will be invited to both of those. So we're just kind of starting that journey and excited about what the rest of the year will bring. If you want to add.
Brilliant, thank you. Questions?
So our plan for you each month is we'll bring, the next time we come, we'll bring the October 21st agenda and highlight for you some of the conversations and what's happening then at the meeting just to keep you apprised of our progress. And the agenda that's attached is going to be a running agenda so that it's just one place that the parents and the teachers have to look. So you'll be able to see the upcoming agenda. And then it'll just be ongoing, so it really will just be one doc. So we're not, there's hardly any different meeting notes. So I think that will streamline everything for all the participants. And the links to the qualitative documentation, the teachers and the elementary and secondary parents are linked in the agenda. So as we move through the year, you'll be able to take a look at the thoughts that the teachers had, is that they're using these documents?
Yeah, I did open those and I'm like, oh, they're.
Yeah, yeah, I haven't used yet. No, we just, just introduced those, so. But we'll send out reminders to people who continue to do it, but they're just now starting to get into it and, you know, get a sense of it, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next. Presentation is the Parents Advisory Committee. Is it?
I think it's a more.
No, okay. This is something we. Are we able to find it in your drive?
That's the one we have attached to the agenda.
Right, but we'd like to have it in slides instead of PDF so that.
Oh, gotcha.
We'll just do it this way tonight. So. We're, yeah, we just, we're trying to get the, just.
Hit the arrow on my PowerPoint. I thought I had it there in a slotted format.
Sorry. We'll double check that next. Okay, so we have five that we're gonna present tonight. We have three that graciously showed up, so thank you, I'll let you introduce yourself. They have spent several hours, hours upon hours, online texting, email with their respective schools. And there are more that were also involved, you'll see on the next slide, that have worked every single school except for Mountain View was represented. And at Mountain View, Paul Uzi did reach out to the parents, they just didn't have a parent volunteer, but every other of the 11 schools were represented. So I'm gonna let them present their findings and the board to ask questions.
My name is Jean-Carrie Arnold, I represent Twin Lakes Elementary School, Cory Barnos and Garret.
I'm Jessica Burnett and I'm at two places now.
So the ones right here that are in green, they were the ones that were going to come present tonight. And then everybody that's listed here is the ones that were the parent contacts and they have a lot of females, some of whom didn't realize what they were getting into. And several people said, oh my goodness, I don't think I can even do the next school because I'm getting a lot of feedback. So they'll talk about what their process was.
So we had three subcommittee meetings with Dr. Meyer. With Dr. Meyer's help, we, she sent out a text message to all the parents, a part of the school district, and informed them that they would be receiving email. And per individual school representative, we made our own little excerpt of introducing ourselves and what we were requesting from the parents. And that was input on a flow chart regarding COVID-19 and guidelines. And so each parent received an email and then they had the opportunity to put feedback in and input directly to us through email. So each of us received, I think a total, we see maybe 60 to 70 emails in conglomeration with all the schools. So we received a pretty good amount of emails from parents. And the emails ranged from many different opinions. So I believe you guys did see the flow chart originally that we sent out to the parents saying, hey, what do you think about this flow chart? And what's your input, what do you want to tweak? And a lot of the parents did that, they tweaked it. And they had a lot of concerns with that flow chart. So at our last meeting, we actually decided to scratch that flow chart. It was very complicated and the parents got very overwhelmed. So we decided to create an easier, more simple one to follow that simply shows guidelines for asymptomatic individuals. And then if you're symptomatic, of course, that is a whole other ballgame that we can discuss. But this is the simple guidelines that we created. And this is actually with, using the Panhandle Health District. On the bottom, it shows that Panhandle created something very similar to this and we just tailored it to our district and our schools. So this is just like I said, for asymptomatic individuals. So at the beginning, you have 14-day isolation, which from the CDC is recommended as the safest isolation. So you stay home. 10 days is the next step, next safest isolation with no testing. This is not having COVID-19 testing. So you isolate at home. And then in that little corner, you see that we actually mirrored the verbiage that you guys used for the COVID-19 reopening plan. That masks are made available and they're an individual choice. So we mirrored that to the opening plan. And then the next one down is a seven-day isolation at home with testing and that is with the COVID-19 testing being negative. And then you make, because you cannot test obviously until day five. And then at that point, if your test is negative, then you can return to class. So that seemed to be a simpler guideline for parents to follow. The other one, the last, like I said before, was very complicated and it had a lot of gray areas and a lot of issues that the parents didn't quite see eye to eye with. And then this one also doesn't include a very detailed symptom list and anything to do with vaccinations, which we feel that that lies within speaking with your healthcare provider. So that was what we ended up.
And it's right here, so if you look at, in the plan where they put that, again, we highlight anything to change to go to the board. They said right here under student family responsibilities, they put it here, recommended putting it here, or see optional isolation guidance here, which would be that optional guidance flow chart. And then also they recommended putting it right here under the resources, the last part, under resources. So it would be located in three spots, correct? Or are we trying to determine? Yeah, they, they're making a recommendation to you tonight. Okay. And their recommendation is to link it here, your student family responsibilities. Okay. And then right here. Oh, okay. Right here, just the two spots. And that's, they're asking for, I mean, they're doing, they were, by your directive, they, they were supposed to get parental feedback. So then they scrapped, the first one came up with this. So their recommendation is that we use this flow chart. And they, at the subcommittee, they asked if we, if the board recommends, we'll approve this, then we could send it out to all parents. Okay, Lisa, let's take it easy to understand. Does anyone have any questions for this subcommittee?
No, this is crazy.
Yeah, it is, I like how simple this is. Yeah, looks really good. My only concern is all the information going back and forth, they've come to this conclusion, needs to be made available in case somebody requests it for public records. Those, whenever it took to determine this chart, just like if it was the board doing it, still has to be. I don't know how you guys kept the data, if you did a little survey or Google Doc sheet or whatever it was, but. However, when you meet, you guys. Yeah, we have notes at the meeting that are there. And then if it's, if it's a public records request, then each person could have information. Yeah, as long as it's all contained in one spot, that's fine. Awesome, thank you for the work, that was great. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, you don't have to say, I'll text the group back. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks to Stella reports, the first is the financial presentation. My CFO, Ryan Lawson.
Chairman. Awesome, there's the board, Dr. Meyer. So I'll try to go through the finance report fairly quickly here because of the large agenda. September is really the first month on the expenditure side where we sort of get an idea where we're gonna be. Because it's really when they first hit all the teacher salaries, all the peripros that come back. So we don't have a lot of revenue, as you can see this month, that really comes in the month of September. And we're tracking traditionally, like we've had in previous years, part of the revenue side. The expenditure side, I mean, we have a budget of 36, almost $37 million. And for the month, we spent 3.1 million. So the first month, I always want to look and say, are we right around that 8.5, 8.6% to budget, the 112? And we are, that's about 8.5%. In subsequent months, I wouldn't be surprised as we get all the hiring from Emergency Levy on and more staff on, that will run a little hotter than that. But that's sort of planned for by adding that staff. But just so you know, the first month though, it looks like the staff we had sort of on board that we're right in the wheelhouse as far as expenditure. So that's good news. If you look at traditionally, the last three years, the revenues were very similar because we sort of, our property taxes come in, the big statement comes in in July and August. And so it's pretty consistent. Exponenture side, you know, one year we had 13.87, this year 14.81, which is a little high. But I think a lot of that is that we've definitely had more spending in July and August this year with some COVID costs and some other things that were happening. And, but I'm not too worried about that because of this number running in line. Because our big spending really is coming up. So, you know, at least for the start of the year, we're looking good. If I, you know, if we look at graphically, you know, you can see that for, you know, the monthly activity, you know, for our elementary and secondary, the month is very close to our red line for the year to date because really September is when those programs and all the teachers come back, that's really our, purely our cost. Other, like administrative support, those costs start in July, that's why the continuum's not quite as even. But again, we're tracking fine. And my object, it's the same, as you can see, you know, our salaries and benefits are pretty close to the red line. It's really, September's the first month in July and August. Even though the cash is going out, it's, much of the salaries are accrued back to the previous fiscal year. But there's really no surprises, that's good. The enrollment report, the previous month, we had 4,710. This month, 4,716, for the snapshot of time, but we're sort of maintaining our, our numbers at the start. Which, that's good news, especially given the pandemic. And, you know, compared to last year, we are up quite a bit. But of course, that's, you know, last year, that's it because of COVID. That's not the unexpected, but enrollment numbers look good. And after that, you know, we have all the other pages with the BMO report and the AS, the student activity accounts, you know, for your reference if you have any questions, but that's all I have. Things are looking okay, these started, at the start of the year. Okay, thank you.
I think the presentation is not a lot. The red. Oh, and I almost, sorry. We're moving on to the audit presentation by 20 minutes.
Well, thanks for having me tonight. Yeah, before. Thank you. You want to do it? I appreciate you guys having me up tonight. This is a big week for me, this is my fourth presentation in four nights. So it's been, it's been a traveling show for me. I was telling Brian that I, I'm either on my game or I'm gonna crash and burn. So we hope that I still have something left to do. But I wanted to thank you guys for letting me come up and give the presentation. I know that you guys have received a copy of the draft financial statements and forepack. I'm not gonna go through those line by line. We're gonna go through, I have a graph presentation which you guys have seen in the past. And just gonna run through primarily the general fund and then a few of the other ones that I feel are significant for the district. So one of, one of the things that I always, like, I don't always do, but sometimes I feel like it's a good thing to just kind of go back through what, what we do when we do an audit. Obviously, the goal is for us to come out and give an opinion on the financial statements. Ultimately, that is the purpose. We're, we're an independent auditing firm coming in to look at the numbers and come back and say, whether we believe the numbers that the district have given us are fairly stated or not fairly stated. The numbers are fairly stated, so we are right where we want to be. Clean opinion will be issued this year. But as we go through the audit process, we do more than just come in and look at the numbers. Primarily, when we start an audit, we want to come in and effectively, we have to gain some sort of understanding of the risk of material misstatement, which is just a fancy way of saying that we want to come in and look at the checks and balances, the systems and processes that the district have or has in place to make a determination if we have certain risks. Like, it's certain risks with different numbers or different groups of numbers. And then we want to focus our attention and our, our time and energy on places where we feel like there's a higher likelihood of mistake than not the places. How we primarily do that, we come in and we, we look at, well, I kind of break it down into five systems, but your cash receipts, your cash disbursements, your payroll, and then your sort of closing process. What does that really mean? It means that we're gonna come in and we look to make sure that when cash is coming into the district, that there's a process for receiving that cash and there's a process to make sure that that cash and revenue that comes in gets recorded into the right bucket. The district, we all, the district does a good job of that. Right now, there's what we call key controls, which means that there's a process in which someone has to verify or approve dollars coming in the door or dollars going out the door. So Cindy maintains sort of dual records and she comes in at the end of every month and makes sure that both of those records for what she believes got deposited get reconciled back. And then she does bank reconciliation and Brian reviews that every single month. So that's the process that we, we've been told's in place. We come in and randomly select and test some months to make sure that we see that, that those records have reconciled and that there was a bank reconciliation and review done. And in all of our test, test samples, the district asks those. So I believe that that's functioning well. On the cash disbursement side, which is obviously, you know, when you guys have all this money going out the door, we want to make sure that it's, it's going out in the right spots and it's going out once it's been approved. That starts with the board approving the budget and then that budget goes into your Skyward system. Skyward tracks all of those individual budget amounts. And all expenditures have to go through a PO process, which we randomly selected. We probably select upwards of 50 or 60 different random selections just to make sure that we see a PO process being followed, we see that we have prior approval before those dollars go out the door. And in all those cases, we saw that that was functioning as, as we intended it to. Skyward's kind of got a cool feature too, and you guys probably already noticed, but it does play if any particular expense account is over what budget was. It plays as like, hey, this is over the amount of the annual budget. So there's some internal control built into Skyward itself to just help maintain, to make sure that the district's following. On the payroll side, we come in and we get the approved wage scale. We pull random contracts and time cards to make sure that all of those time cards or wages that are paid are matching back to the approved wage scales. We make sure that anybody who does have a time card submission, that we see approval by supervisor. And in all of our test cases, those are all functioning as described as well. So from that perspective, I always love to see when we have controls in all of those places. Those are sort of the automated systems that are happening. controls in all of those places. Those are sort of the automated systems that are happening. As important to that, from my perspective, is coming in and looking at the, what we call journal entries, which is just, as you guys probably already know, but it's just a way that you can come in and manually make an adjustment to an account. So I can say, well, I had something here and now I'm going to move it over there. So anytime there is manual adjustments, journal entries, which are common, things get misquoted, things happen. It's important to have an approval process along with those. And we came in and looked at all significant journal entries for the entire year, and there was approval of each one of those. So I feel really, really good from a control perspective that the district has control in place. That means that the numbers are getting to the right spot when you come to looking at your financial statements every single, every single month. So we do all of that when you just start an audit. And then from there, we, we're going to come in and obviously, we're going to look and make sure that cash is your cash and your receivables are your receivables. But I find that there's more value, well, there's as much value in just coming in and looking at the system and helping the management. If there are deficiencies, correct those and get to a point where you see those approvals happening on the backend. So when those numbers get up to the board, you're looking at numbers that you can feel confident in. All right, that's my internal controls field. Like I said, we're going to, we're going to be issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements. Everything's fairly stated. I'm going to run through the general fund today. Started off, the district started with a fund balance and a general fund of $5,663,000. Revenues last year were $34,923,000. Expenditures were $33,601,000. And you ended the year with a fund balance of $6,984,000. That was an increase of $1.3 million in the general fund this year. So that was a, from a fund balance perspective, a good year for the district. If you look at the history of your revenues and expenditures, expenditures, the top line here, I've actually added your budget, just your 2022 budget, just so we can kind of get a look at it. I just like to look at it. It gives me a little better perspective on where the district has come from. One of the things that is key here, in 2016, from 2016 to 2021, the districts had an increase in the fund balance each of those years. Prior to that, through 2015, there was four years of losses. This looks, we can look at this a little bit closer in terms of your fund balance, and you get a better sense of what those gains and losses over those years mean for the district. All right, so there's a couple of different numbers here. The two green numbers, I just want to talk about this real fast. So the district implemented a fund balance policy in 2016. The two close lines together was the initial fund balance policy, which stated that the fund balance, you were trying to keep it between five and seven and a half, seven and a half percent of expenditures. And just for year 20, the fund balance policy was updated to be 8.3 to 16.6%. And as Brian had mentioned, that 8.3 is effectively one month. So the fund balance was changed to be the min max between one month and two months. You can see at the end of fiscal year 21, you guys heard, the district is now just above that, that 16.6% number. You're actually sitting on about 2.5 months' worth of operating expenses in your general fund. One of the things that this has been your fund balance, there's also a national recommendation, which is generally the graph that I put up when I'm looking at fund balance, which states, did you go away recommends that a district or a government entity have at least two months' worth of operating revenues or expenses as their fund balance? So the top line of your current fund balance policy represents that minimum that the GFOA said, says. So yes, you are above that 16.6. You're also just above sort of the minimum national recommendation as well. If we look at your revenues a little bit closer. Your revenues this last year were, again, $34,923,000. Your local dollars, which is really going to be your levy dollars, were $9,821,000. That was down about $75,000 year over year, although it was the same levy. When it comes to recording the revenues for the district, the collection rate makes a difference in how much revenue you get recognized. So I've seen this across all the districts that I've been at. Same levy rates, lower actual revenue based on the fact that collections have been slower than they have sort of been, which makes sense with the pandemic and, and just the current environment for everyone right now. Your state dollars were $24,663,000. And this, this is the biggest story there is in the general fund, and I've seen this across the board. Your state revenues were down just over a million dollars this last year. And we all know that we had the holdbacks and not news to everyone. The holdback, the base support was down $971,000. Your other support was down a little bit as well. But that has, that has impacted, impacted the district. Had it just been normal year, which I don't know if we're going to, I don't know when a normal year is going to come back. But as we get to the expenditure side, some of the way the general fund, the overall fund balance did get affected by all the different COVID dollars that became available. So as we look at the expenditure side of things, I'm going to explain that a little bit more, but overall, your state revenue was down $8,555,000. Your other revenue is just your E-rate reimbursement that you get every single year, every single year. And the transfers, so this is the first year you really had transfer in, so revenue coming in and transfers from other funds. The state released COVID money beginning of this week year 21 that was really related. They say, hey, you can go back to March of 20 and any expenses that qualify, we've released this money in 21, you can reimburse yourself for those. So there was about $41,000 of COVID dollars from that, that this week year 21 released that came back into the general fund. If we look at your revenue for your local state as a percentage, you can see there's pretty consistent. There's a change from 17 to 18, where you went from your local dollars being 21% to 2018 being about 29%, even that's where you guys have kept and holding. That was really that initial levy rate went from the $5.3 million up to the $9 million. So that was that first big levy increase that you had, and it sort of changed the nature of your, of your dollars that come in. What does that really mean? Your state and your state money, obviously, well, as you know, your state money comes in more often and is front loaded. So when you guys gave your state dollars, you even got half of it in, in August of every single year. Your levy dollars are going to come in in July, so the seventh month of the year. And then also in, excuse me, January, your seventh month of the year. And then also, you get that second big payment in July, which is the 13th month of the year. So although you get to count those revenues, you actually don't have the cash until the end of July, and then the county releases those dollars. So at the end of fiscal year 21, you, the, the district was sitting and was waiting on, had a receivable from the county for $3,165,000. And also had a state, that last state payment came in and you were waiting on that, was toward $994,000. So of your fund balance, you had about $2.2 million, which is really, you got, you got to take the credit for the revenue, but the cash was not in the door. What's that, what does that mean? Means if you look at your fund balance, it was 6.9 million. You minus out what was still there to be received, your actual available dollars are closer to about 2.8. Payroll for July is 2.4. So if you, you have to have the dollars available in order to pay your payroll, you're really sitting on about $400,000 of actual available cash at the end of the year, which for the district means about four and a half days' worth of expenditures. So although you have that higher fund balance this year, when you start breaking down the cash flow and the way it comes in, it does get a little bit tight. You know, the district has moved on from those times where you were getting tax anticipation notes at the end of the year in order to get cash covered, to covering the payroll. So that, that time is over, which is good. But when you're, when you are looking at your fund balance, I do think it's important to understand that, yes, you're above that 16.6, but that doesn't mean that the district's necessarily getting clear in terms of where their fund balance is when it comes to making sure that all those bills get paid in that July period. All right, on the expenditure side, your total expenditures this year were $33,601,000. That was down about $2 million year over year. However, I guess I'm tagging this as the COVID effect. With the different extra monies that were available and Idaho rebounds, the district was able to cover expenditures that would generally be paid for out of the general fund with those other dollars. You received about $2.2 million of COVID money last year. So that COVID dollars is part of the story in why the fund balance went up $1.3 million this last year. Based on the fact that those expenditures were covered with those dollars rather than paying for it out of the general fund. Your instruction expenses were $20,390,000. That was down about $1,045,000. Again, part of that's going to be those expenditures being covered by those COVID dollars. On the support side, total support was $12,939,000, which is down about $538,000 year over year. Your transfer expenses are really, you get state money coming in and you have to make a bus depreciation transfer, so that was $147,000. And then your Medicaid act was $125,000. So that represents the transfers with the $271,000. If you look at the percentage of support versus instruction, the district's been real consistent. The same, like on a percentage basis, the same dollars have went to support and instruction. Fairly historically, there's not much of a change in this graph. With 60% of your dollars going to instruction, that's better than what I see in a lot of the districts that I, that I ended up doing the audits for. So that's a good sign. And you can see I also put fiscal year 22 budget on there, which puts you right effectively at the same percentage as you were in fiscal year 21. Payroll and benefits. Again, you got the last column there is going to be next year's or the current year fiscal year 22 budget. You can see after a number of years of payroll and benefits increasing, this last year, total payroll and benefits dropped about 4.6%, down to the $29,000, $29,261,000. Again, some of that's going to be the fact that COVID dollars covered it. Some of it was planned cuts at the beginning of the year, knowing that we're going into the COVID year. And then I ended up talking to Brian, that the district really watched their salaries and benefits as as teachers moved in and out, making a determination on whether or not we need to refill that position or if we're going to hold on for a year. So the management of the payroll and benefits is also part of the reason why that, that decrease of the 4.6%. If we look at the general fund expenditures from just a different perspective, instead of instruction and support, payroll and benefits, other expenses, you can see payroll and benefits accounted for 87.1% of your total expenses. And that's been historically where you guys have spent most of your money, which effectively means at the time you signed the contract, that you think in the year, 86% of your dollars have been committed at that point. This year 21 ended up with 87.1 to 12.9, and you can see in your fiscal year 22 budget, you're roughly in the same, same wheelhouse as you were in this week year 21. All right, want to go through a couple more funds with, with the, with the board tonight before I take off. Child nutrition fund. This has been interesting for all of the districts that I've, that I've been auditing. You guys started the year with $234,000. Your revenues this last year were $2214,000. That was a million dollars year over year. So, and this is historic, this has been the, been the story of child nutrition for all of the districts that I do audits on. With the lunch program, basically going under summer food, you have no qualifying event to get a free lunch and you have a higher reimbursement rate. That led to lunch reimbursements being about $1.2 million, higher than it was in the prior year. Obviously, you lost the sales, but, and that's why you, your total revenue was up a million and not 1.2 million. But that's, that's, that's huge in terms of the amount of dollars that came to your child nutrition fund. On the expense side, total expenses were $1,574,000. That was up about $385,000, which is really related to food cost increases. And you ended the year with a fund balance of $874,000. So child nutrition fund had a fund balance increase of about $639,000. A74 is a lot of, you're in a much different spot than you were in the beginning of the year with, with the balance there. You've got service fund. Started the year with a fund balance of $241,000. The district's revenues were $1.5 million. That came in your levy dollars of $104.76 and your bond equalization payment from the state of $38,000. The district retired $1280,000 of its principal debt this last year and made an interest payment of $196,000 to end the year with a fund balance of $2533,000, an increase of about $42,000. Your Indian loan balance or debt balance right now is, was $5130,000. Expected to be all of your two bonds paid off in, by August 15th of 2025, which is right around the corner. And you're scheduled to pay, oh, you actually already paid it, $1.4 million was due in August, which is your next child principal. So that's generally why you carry forward a fund balance to make sure you can make that payment in August. Capital projects fund, the last one I'm going to talk about today. Started the year with a fund balance of $1445,000. Your revenues this, this last year were $275,000, which represents your levy dollars of $1165,000. And then transfers coming in from your bus depreciation transfers and other transfers that the district made. Total expenses this last year were $1,731,000. Primarily, those are capital outlay purchases. The district purchased five buses this last year, had building improvements, about $554,000. Equipment purchases of $89,000. And you ended the year with a fund balance of $1,789,000, an increase of about $344,000. So capital projects is, you know, it's, it's been up, it's been down. It seems like there's always a big repair project that happens every single year. You know, it's, you're buying buses. You tend to spend those dollars every single year. So that's where capital projects ended up. Overall, like I said, I think the big, the big story this year in all of my districts is that the effect of COVID has it's had a terrible year and it's had a positive impact financially for, for most schools that I've, I've been working with in terms of the general, with just all the COVID dollars that have been released. Being able to cover other expenses. So your district is no different than other ones that I've seen in terms of seeing a bigger fund balance than anybody expected in the, in the current year. But again, I do think it's worth continuing to watch the fund balance, being at that two month, just above that two month line now is a great spot to be and it's right there where, where you see sort of the national recommendation in terms of how big your fund balance. And all your other funds seem to be in pretty good shape. So any questions for me?
I do have, I have just maybe one question.
Yeah.
But it's on the financial statements.
I have a copy.
On page 23 of the document, you're referencing year 1900, if you can read through this slide.
Because that's a mistake.
Okay, okay. It's that way here in the document.
That's interesting. So sometimes we have a length of breaks. So I will fix that.
Yeah, there's a change where it's zero.
Yeah. I usually catch that.
1900. I was just, it's on page 23 of the document, page 26 to page 27.
Yeah, when it breaks, it breaks. So I would get that. You have the draft?
I do.
Yeah, so the final, I'll make sure. My copy's, but that doesn't help you, does it?
Well, I was looking at the, what am I missing here? Because I'm always asking questions, but I gained a little knowledge and I thought, what is 1900?
Well, that's a good question and I apologize for that. And I'll make sure that I get it.
Great, thank you. Well, just out of curiosity, you made reference to a significant journal entry, but what is significant?
Significant is going to be defined just by dollar amount is what we tend to look at. So, I mean, there's going to be So, I mean, there's going to be journal entries made. We're going to look at the ones that are of multiple tens of thousands of dollars. So we're not looking at the five dollar entries, no. Looking at the $10,000 entries. We're going to be looking at ones that are going to be greater than that, just to make sure that there's no material things getting moved around. We don't look at every single journal entry. We just make sure that we look at those ones that, and I didn't write the number down that we'll look at, but it's going to be right in to that 50,000 dollar range. Make sure that everything's looked at. You know why it was interesting.
Thank you for the question.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Absolutely. Enjoy the night.
You as well.
Well.
Next is the safety presentation.
I get to talk about my favorite subject, safety. So I just have a few updates for the board. Our district safety team met, we meet the fourth Wednesday of each month from 3:30 to 5:00 here at the district office. And spent a great deal of time talking about what's, what's the next rollout of planning and preparation and training for our staff. And with Deputy Clausen and Sergeant Miller from County Sheriff's Department on our team, they have offered to provide CRAES training, which is Citizen Response to Active Shooter Band. And it focuses on how citizens should respond, not how law enforcement will respond. So we have begun, I began talking to principals about when would be the best time to do that. We're not going to be able to do all of the schools this year because it's a four-hour training. And so we'll have to look at summertime and sometimes when teachers are willing to give some time. So, but they will provide that training to us for free.
So in the target of citizens, is it for teachers or is it for parents or is it for...?
It's, we're focusing on how teachers would respond in the school, but it's definitely front of citizens' side and not as a first responder necessarily in the school. It will reinforce the run, fight, kind of behaviors that we want people to have. I just wanted to let you know that our team is really strong. And because of what happened last year with coverage and wanting to be proactive and making sure that you're aware that we have one armed guard out sick for a prolonged period of time. And so we just immediately let the SRO in that area know that we have a school with one person down. So that SRO made it a point to check in with that principal and just kind of each day making sure that he was visible on the CRAES front a little bit. And then also the other armed guards assisted with coverage for school events and things that they needed help with. So basically, it was all hands on deck to make that go smoothly. So he's back and, well, he's back where they're supposed to be, but just keep you in the loop. You're welcome. And then lastly, just wanted to let you know that on Friday, October 1st, which was the second of the two state curriculum teacher and service days, for the secondary staff, Sergeant from ISP came to Lakeland High School. We had all of our secondary staff either there in person or virtually. And he did about an hour presentation on current teen drug trends with a lot of conversation around fentanyl. And some of the kinds of things that teachers could be looking for as far as just logos and different things that should queue us in that maybe the kids are into some things that might be dangerous. So it was a really good presentation, gave a lot of really good information. So that happened on Friday, the 1st. That's all I have for you.
No questions?
Thank you very much.
I never knew emojis could help so much meaning.
Yeah, they have, kids have emojis and they're all related to different drugs.
So next, we have the curriculum directory presentation.
I think that the request for this came from the curriculum workshop maybe that we did a while ago. So this has been a labor of love. Rebecca Davis has been a huge help. And so as you are perusing this, if there's something that I have forgotten that you want in there, please just let me know and I will put it in there. But I know what you wanted at the beginning, what our, our current recommended adoption cycle is so that parents are aware of what might be coming next. And then also what our current adopted texts are, so those are in there. And then we have a section for our novel sets by Gray Man, so you can look at those. And then also additional resources that have been approved by previous boards that are still in classrooms and being used as tools. So, and those are the books that are housed in, so the books that, where the pictures are. Well, they're all in here, but those are, Rebecca actually pulled them out of the closet to picture. Yes, so that way the parents can kind of get a visual of what the book looks like. But we, so we have this now. She was still working when we updated this on the middle level and the elementary pictures. The books that are in there, so I will continue to add to this. And then as the board approves supplemental resources, we will have, so this is going to become a very long document, but I, my impression from the board's request was that you really wanted it to be something that the parents could just look at and not have to click links and open things. So if there's a format that you would like better or if there's something different you would like, I'm happy to make changes. But I took it to Dr. Meyer and said, I'm not sure that I love the way this, it gets so long, but I don't know how to do it differently without.
I would like to acknowledge that it did, I think it looks very well done and professional. And Ms. Sexton and Rebecca have worked hours on this and it's very well organized and I'm thoroughly impressed. I hope parents really appreciate. I think it's a really good, great document.
So we will house this on the website. And then additionally, Rebecca does have a notebook that she's been creating. So we will print this and put it in notebooks so parents can come and look through it if they want. And then we also have the books. So we definitely, I think, have created an avenue for parents to be informed about what materials we're using in classrooms.
And we will put this in the next edg blog so that parents know it's available. And Ms. Sexton will say, these are the different routes. You can look at it electronically, you can come in, you can look at it paper, you can actually pull them out. So really, I just want to acknowledge all of her work on that. She's done, I think she's done a amazing job on it.
Again, if, as you're looking at it, if you think, oh, if we did this, it would make it flow better, I'm open to suggestions.
I think you've done an outstanding job. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to clarify to you, it wasn't a project of the board. The board was simply trying to make sure that the district is in line with statute and the words. So really, it's not even our prerogative of whether we get to do it or not. We have to have it.
I just, and I wasn't.
No, I understand.
I just was, it came out of this conversation. So I wanted you to know that I had followed through on that.
Yes, and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you.
Well, we're back. I think this is the last one. Oh, we're not done yet. Okay, based on some of our conversations we met with the SIP planning, or Dr. Lisa. I was reading. I'm a doctor today. Lisa and I put this together for you. So again, we would love some feedback, but our hope is that we're bringing some clarity specific to that part of student achievement data with the mindset that we were really cognizant of not over testing or putting tests in place just so that we had something to report, but what we're currently doing. So I'll go ahead and let, do whatever I already. Yeah, so, so this, this presentation or update is the plan of action because at the end of first quarter, these are the things we want to bring to you. So if there's something more that you want, this is a great opportunity for you to give us that feedback. So our plan is at the end of first quarter, we are going to, well, at the end of each quarter, we're going to provide for you some diagrams that show grade level proficiency. And it will be important, we'll remind them more when we come back, but this diagnostic assessment that we're using is an end of the year assessment. So it is expected in the first quarter that we have very low proficiency rates because they haven't taught enough skills. And so, but each quarter that we bring it to you, the expectation would be that proficiency rates are starting to move and go up. We'll be able to see that trajectory of our goal line and specific to asterisk standards. So we will be doing that in grades K through eight. And for ELA and math. And then ISIP, which is our IRI from the state. We will give you proficiency rates and we'll probably do overall proficiency rates. There are breakdowns specific to each of the components of the test, but we'll give you that overall proficiency rate, which is what we report to the state. We actually do that test monthly, but we'll report on it quarterly by grade. So you can just see again how Kendra is doing across the district. How Chris is doing second and third. And then the other piece, we talked about this in our SIP planning and just having some of that authentic oral reading assessment. So we can just really see how kids are reading, how they're progressing. So K through three on the report card, we have proficiency rates for proficient, basic and below basic. And it's a number that they have to achieve. And so we'll report on that per grade. So proficiency rates specific to Kendra and third. And then we, and just as a reminder, and then for maybe community members who are, who watched this board meeting tonight, who weren't there for the SIP workshop, we chose the oral reading fluency because we have a really good conversation together, all of us, about how do we measure the decoding skills that our young readers are acquiring and what's the best way to do that? And out of that conversation came the oral reading fluency because it really does allow the teacher to look at if we're making errors, what specifically are the errors so that we can dial in the decoding part. But the fluency piece is really the ability to take all those discrete skills that they learn in kindergarten, first grade and put them together to be a more reader. It also allows more of a diagnostic look from the instructional standpoint for teachers to look at those errors and then what's the accuracy look like. The other piece that I think is important, we talked about this, is remember the ISIP is specific to a computerized test. The oral reading is one-on-one with the teacher. So again, looking at those two different measures and how they compare and the correlation in those pieces. So I think we'll be able to look at some comprehensive data and feel like you have a better understanding of how our kids are doing. And then we didn't want to leave high school out because they have their own criteria that we're looking at. But we are working, I am working with each of our five secondary principals this year to implement and build a multi-tiered system of support at each school, where we will look at our kids who struggle in either English or math or both and provide a really strong intervention to build their skill level while also assisting with the content that they're getting in their classes so they don't fall behind here because of skill deficits, be able to close that gap. So I met with Dr. Becky. Dr. Becky. Dr. Meyer yesterday for my, my fall IPLP meeting. And my goal, my personal goal is tied to how these NTSS students achieve because I'm so, this is where my focus is going to be this year. I'm working with our secondary staff, so I'm very excited about the plans we're putting in place. I spent all day today at Timberlake High School with one of the principal assistants up there, meeting one-on-one with kids and interviewing them and just asking them, you know, what's hard about school? And if it was math, so talk to them a little bit about what's hard about math. Is it multiplication and division, is it fractions, is it storage problems? And so we really were able to kind of dissect what things are breaking down for kids just from their perspective. So I'm very excited about this and so I'll be able to bring that data to you. They are going to use IREDA in ELA also, so each quarter. Elementary kind of already has established protocols around NTSS. So the focus with elementary teams is just really perfecting and just, you know, streamlining some of those things. And if there are areas that we can address, we'll do a little bit better just reflecting and making those practices better. So, so the idea would be at the end of this year, we have really good solid systems of support for all K-12. So we did this, we kind of brainstormed after our SIP workshop. We think this is what the board is looking for as far as the updates to you. So just any input that you can give us, if there was something more that you were hoping we were going to bring. If there's a way that you want us to present that, we're open to whatever suggestions you might have. I think it's a great start. We want to kind of see the data and you see the charts, it might, and you might have more feedback and say, this would be easier to change or tweak or this is hard to read. So we can make changes.
We don't have any to.
Right, exactly. So this input is really about, was there something missed as we were putting this plan of action together? So the first quarter ends on November 4th, I believe. The 5th is the teacher workday. So we would be working feverishly to bring you that data at the next board meeting, board meeting after.
What would it be more appropriate to do at the second one?
We won't have one in November because it's Thanksgiving. So it won't take us long to pull the data out of those programs. But that's our intention.
Unless you want to come on Thanksgiving.
Well.
You know, the first meeting in December too.
That's true. There's options. If we, if we feel like we're crunched, we will communicate with Janelle. That's our intention.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And since it's only one slide for the first time ever in the history of six years of me working here. We just sent it to Janelle, I just sent it to Janelle this afternoon. You can just put it up here. We don't have to do that. So I did want to follow up because the dress code, and I know it is also later on the agenda, but the admin feedback is linked in there for the board so that you have a couple of days you could look at it. And certainly feel free to ask questions. We'll get back to it on discussion items, but I just wanted to give you that feedback. And again, we are open if we're going to change policies in a better way for us to get that information out to parents, whether it's through the edg blog or whether it's through each school. We're open to how that communication can better be served so that the board doesn't receive so many emails about a policy they changed. So we are open to how, because I know that's been a lot for the board to get all of that feedback. So we definitely don't want that to happen in the future. So we are open to how that can work better for everyone. So that's all I'm reporting back on this time. Business, we have a follow-up, which we did have a conversation with the executive session. Does there at least any further follow-up?
I think it's pretty explicit instructions on what to do.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't need follow-up.
Okay. Okay. Parent surveys is on business. I would like to, oh, I, I'm sorry.
Oh.
It is something different than what I was thinking it was, so go ahead, sorry.
I, it was just brought up because I've, I've been working with Ms. Lisa, trying to get the parent surveys. And so the board asked for an update. So is there anything that I can do to help you to obtain the parent surveys? Because I don't recall seeing, I've seen the student surveys, but I have not been able to get them here and survey. I don't know if I knew that I needed to parent.
Can, can I interject?
Yes, please.
I think the parent surveys was the information. I want to send out my annual October survey to all the parents. And I normally ask the same, all six years, I've asked the same questions when I do a report for the board. I had asked the board, do you have any... I had asked the board, do you have any questions that you would like me to put in there for parent, for feedback for you? And so I would just like to know if there's anything the board would like me to add before I send that out.
Off the top of my head, I guess I would have to look at an existing survey too.
Okay, I sent that to board update, so I want.
You did send the survey and the board update.
I didn't, no, I just asked for further, I've used the same survey for the last.
Yeah.
So I'll send the questions.
So they'd be the right questions.
Okay. And the next is the YouTube, YouTube channel video transfer. Thank you for the memo. That is most informative. I do appreciate it. So based on the memo, everything has been transferred over.
As far as we can tell.
To the district's channel.
And I did, in that memo, also the current.
Okay, so the subcommittee work, subcommittee and workshop online presence. That is for, that's our old business in the sense that we've never. We need to determine as a board if we're going to continue to do subcommittee and workshops online, if we're recording them, if we're just going to have the window into the meeting for the parents that want to come but can't come. But there is kind of a inconsistency with, are we recording? Are we, you know, what, what, what is our format? So.
Didn't we get input from legal counsel? It wasn't something we had documented in email, something where we said make a statement to inform the public that these will not be recorded, or it made available that it was just a.
That is correct.
And we haven't decided. So we have to decide before we can make a statement.
I'm just.
Because I won't just make the statement without having board input.
Yeah.
I think just having it available for people to, that can't attend, but, you know, through the subcommittee workshops that I don't see them to record. Make it available. It's just one more thing they can track.
Right. But these agreements are so inaccessible.
Yeah, just give access. That's my opinion.
And I think that's consistent with what all the other districts are doing and also with the recommendation from the H2's office. Also, you know, I know that they sort of harped on it. We sort of skated past it that they were really, once the governor rescinded the order about no public, you know, being allowed, and once they allowed for the public to, for us to be back in the public meeting, they were very much trying to get people to quit recording and quit doing all of it, to be true, is what their recommendation was in the video. I think as far as the workshops and the subcommittees, I find just a B and A, I agree with Rob, I don't think we have to record those too. I don't think that would be as consistent with what other districts are doing.
And then the final old business topic is our website, hot topic notification, feedback on policy suggestion box. Those comments, those points of interest did come from a workshop. And we do need a way to help get the public informed with what's going on. And so it looks like the recommendation for policy notification or hot topic, there's consideration for doing a pop-up box, like what we do when we want people to register for other important things. Policy feedback, you could do a pop-up box, which would offer a Google form for people to provide input with their thoughts, I guess. And then with a suggestion box, they're saying the suggestion is to move it to the, just the school board page. But basically have a feedback form under the school board page about topics or whatnot people want to see the board address.
The, the general request for a suggestion box.
Right, right.
Because we should all sound good. I guess my other question is then who's going to monitor it? Who's going to be responsible for all the records and, you know, because at some point we're going to end up like everything else we've been learning. There's going to have to be somebody in charge of this thing, but I think also it's great.
Well, I think maybe if we chose to start with one, to see how it is accepted by the community and then build from there, as opposed to just creating, you know, a whole new position for someone to have.
Right, right. I think the policy feedback is good. I think it was sort of along with Dr. Meyer saying they could reach out to the parents or whoever on the Edge of Law, you know, their tools that they have. And then once people are notified that if there was a policy feedback form, where the public could say, hey, blah blah blah, then it's accumulated. Instead of digging through emails or, you know, writing down, somebody called you or whatever.
Right.
Then it's all in one spot and it's easy to tackle that way. You know, then we could say, oh, we have, you know, 15 suggests this, five suggests that, or whatever. Okay.
Or just having a suggestion box in some central locations and then keeping track of people, you know, contacting you or emailing you, if it was just a central location, even kind of sit through. You could see, I mean, you want, you want to report it.
Right, right. Well, respectfully though, with the suggestion box, I would think that would just be fun to the clerk. So that she could, you know, bring it to the board and here we go. So we could move forward with the policy feedback and the suggestion box.
And I would assume that the Google form would be stored in either a spreadsheet or some database. You can save the data.
Yeah.
So why not sending through, well, it essentially be more email looking correct.
So that concludes old business. Moving on to the consent agenda, consent agenda. We have the minutes of the previous meeting, HR items and regular and special bills of subcategories. I just want to give feedback on the minutes, but I think the board goes first and I will chime in. Okay. Are there any comments, corrections, concerns on any of the minutes presented?
Yes.
Okay.
Trying to find it here. Where I made a statement about the data, which. Okay, so it is workshop minutes on page three. When I made that statement about data telling the truth, I didn't say data never tells the truth. I said data doesn't tell the truth. In other words, data isn't true. Received data as being untrue, and data is far from such. So if you just remove the word never, that would be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'm wondering if we're going to do this level of detail for the minutes? If we could request that in complete sentences, grammatically correct periods. There, it's almost as though these, I'm worried that if Patreon requests these for a public records request, that they're going to look like they're notes versus actual minutes. So for instance, under, on the September 23rd, regular school board minutes, under H2 superintendent's report, operational plan update, parent sub, met last week, comma, second meeting, comma, lots of feedback, comma, another meeting next week, comma, 9:29, next, and there's no period, and then the next one, there's not a capital make recommendation to the board on flow chart. So I, I, if we're, if these are notes, that's one thing, that if they're going to go into the final minutes, I would ask that we have formalized minutes.
Okay.
Down a little bit farther on the same one, says Dr. Meyer recognizes specific parents in green for stepping up to gathering feedback from their respective schools. So that would be like, Dr. Meyer recognizes that specific parents are highlighted in the presentation in green highlight. Period. She thanks them for stepping up and, you know, and gathering feedback from her. I just think it either needs to be more detail or less detail, but if we're going to do those, I just, my suggestion is that we have it real formalized. And that's just my suggestion. Yellow highlighted the district admin responsibilities instead of admin. So there's a few. I just highlighted, there is a tool that I found now that the minutes are, because this is the first time we've ever had the minutes in the board book.
Correct.
So one of the nice tools that I found is this highlighting tool. So I'm not sure if it shows up for everyone. Does everyone show my highlights or does everyone show my board? Okay, so then I could share that if there's any spell, just spelling errors or missing words. I think it would be okay just to let the clerk note directly instead of take up time out of the public board. You know, I, I hear what you're saying and I understand that your request is to produce more formalized, fluid minutes as opposed to noted minutes. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and table, or yes, I'm going to table the minutes, approval of the minutes. And we can, we can pick them up next board meeting so that we can have more of a formalized approach instead of a noted approach. And then I will figure out how to, all my highlights to just share with you directly so you have pieces of that.
Okay. Thank you for the order. Are you making a motion to table minutes?
Yes, yeah, I'm making a motion to table the minutes.
I'll send you the motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to HR items. Does anyone have any questions on the board memo? It was, a second memo was produced today. The procedure is that everything comes by Tuesday, but there were some changes that needed to occur because our HR director has been ill. So she graciously got everything updated and it did get updated today. So. The only question I would like to ask HR director is, are we not putting terminated employees on the HR memo?
And that was something that I just was apprehensive about because I feel like the HR memo is more subject to a public records request, where resignations and letters and stuff that are in there are not.
Right.
And I just was uncomfortable. I provided the letters. It's just uncomfortable providing those needs in case they were accessed by public.
Okay. We could certainly check with legal counsel if you'd like us to.
Yes.
Just to make sure.
I think one of the things I could probably do because there are assigned employee numbers, I could just put in the memo, employee number that matches whatever's on there.
Yes. That way it's not disclosure. That'd be a great suggestion. So are there any questions or comments on the HR? Hearing motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Hearing none, the motion carries. I, we, we have the alternate authorization for employee 10.14.218. So do you have any questions? Or discussion points on that? I'll entertain a motion on the alternative authorization for employee 10.14.218.
We approve the alternative authorization for employee 10.14.218.
Second motion.
Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have a request for technology purchase. And I think this is in line with what we've asked about. Primogit.
Yeah.
Purchases so that CFO Wallace is going to create these memos ahead of time. I think there's a big purchase.
Yeah, correct. And so if, and so I hope we just started moving forward or see some of these large things will do that.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions on the technology purchase request? I'll entertain a motion regarding the technology purchase or regarding approval for the purchase of technology equipment.
I'm going to approve the technology purchase.
Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to regular and special bills. Questions or comments? I do have just one question you can probably answer. Do we not have a speech therapist that we're, so, or so contracting this out? Yeah, we have a speech language pathologist.
Okay.
And we have some law and staff and we have one that we are contracting with. Because nobody answered, like there was no.
They answered the call.
Yeah, and the applicant pool, so we had to get the, do a contract. So there's no questions or comments?
I, I have no questions.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion regarding the regular and special bills.
To approve the regular and special bills as presented.
All second motion. Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have the CRT resolution.
Moving on to new business, we have the CRT resolution.
I, my name's attached to it. We kept working through it, working through it, working through it, so I took all the little, it was getting really messy with all the strikeouts that we had, and it was still in the old board book, or the, the other agenda, so all I did with the resolution was basically state, and, and as it, as, as it is written in state and federal statute, the different codes and respect to the law, and some of the board's own policies. And then, instead of restating a bunch of resolves, we can go and do that. I just thought it was just as good to just say that, you know, in pursuit of the aforementioned goals and objectives, that this board does not support critical race theory or its associated tenants to include the 1619 objectives in particular in the school district, you know, blah, blah, blah. Now, the last sentence, an expectation of disciplinary action when a person of authority, because that's now what they call people, mandated reporters in the district who's violated any of the proceedings items, and I put that in there because trustee Bane had made that comment, and that was one of her things, that yes, we can say this, but if something's found in violation of, you know, it was her expectation that there would be some kind of, whatever the rounds of mass, yeah, that might be, or what have you. Also, in stating that, and I know we all received that, and I appreciate the letter from, the email from the LEA addressing also the critical race theory, and how it's blown up throughout the nation, and that our own LEA does not stand with the National Education Association's public, you know, confession, I guess you might say, although things have changed rapidly since then, even at the federal level. But anyway, so that was, that's what I mean, I brought to the board. The board can do whatever it would like to do with the resolution, but, you know, we wanna wait for the other two trustees to have, hear them chime in, or?
Well, and I do think that they, I mean, not wanting to slow the process down, but we've had numerous weeks to chime in.
Yeah, true.
So, thank you for your abundant amount of work on this. The only recommendation I would like to see is that we, whereas the Idaho const, I would like that spelled out, the state of Idaho constitution, and articles spelled out as well. Just, it would flow with everything else that you have listed. That's the only...
Oh, that is the citation.
I believe you, but I thought that it would come out from you to be spelled out.
Yeah.
We can do that, perfect. With that being said, oh, we, this recall, roll call vote, so, will we? Do we have to have two thirds of majority in the roll call?
Can you not sure if, I don't think so, for a resolution, off the resolution.
Okay. All right, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion regarding the CRT resolution.
I would move that we approve the CRT resolution as presented with, or, I'm sorry, I amend my motion, I'll move to approve the resolution with the changes at the Idaho constitution, where it's be spelled out along with the word article in the when we're asked clause.
Also. Having motion in a second, we'll call roll call vote. Trustee present.
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Trustee.
Yes.
We do need to appoint an acting clerk of the board of trustees in the absence of the clerk of the board. The previous clerk that was appointed is no longer with us, so we need to appoint someone for that position. It's my understanding. HR director Cunningham joyfully assumed that position, because she was the previous clerk years ago. Does anyone have any other recommendations?
Happy, is there?
Okay.
Yes, you may. I, you know, I, I would be happy if, you know, Janelle is sick or absent to two minutes and post an agenda, but if Janelle should win the lottery, you know. I, as you know, I wouldn't be able to fulfill that complete obligation that you guys would have to put something emergency into a fact, to get somebody hired right away.
I respect your position.
Okay.
Does anyone have any input? Backup clerk?
Yeah.
She's back.
Thanks. It's too big.
Right.
You better get up.
Yes, she does. Thank you. I think I'd probably, or maybe to do something like an interim backup. We find somebody else in the district who just can't wait to come to the board meeting and get it. But I don't want to, I don't want to... No, I don't want to overwhelm you with the thought that she might get sick. Yeah. So, it happens. I'm not sure if it would, but, yeah. All right, then, I entertain a motion for the appointment of a new acting clerk for trustees in the absence of a clerk of the board.
I would move to appoint HR director Cunningham to acting clerk of the board trustees in the absence of the clerk of the board.
Hearing the motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And you, HR director Cunningham.
I promise I will do everything to not ever be...
Okay.
Just do it in person.
Or win the lottery.
Or win the lottery, because I don't even play.
Then we're all going to the heat. And the next action item is board clerk convention training opportunities.
So that if you want to make a decision on the various training opportunities.
Okay. I don't think that needs to be an action, I think we can table that to be discussion. So, I made the motion to table the board clerk convention and training opportunities.
Now, second motion.
Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. On the agenda is also change of legal counsel, because this is a recommendation from trustee Major. I would move to table that until she's present. Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to curriculum, we have the supplemental resources for board consideration, lips and paypals, and then we also have the second read of supplemental sources that are to many schools for approval. We, they were first read at the last meeting, but we're speaking in the process of. So, it's an action item tonight, so we have two sources for curriculum, all of its supplemental. Do you have any questions, comments, or conversations regarding that? I'll entertain a motion regarding the curriculum. I'll move to approve the curriculum as presented.
Second motion.
Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the kite brother letter to parents.
Or Chair Thompson, I would recommend that this goes to the discussion item as well, because I don't think the board wants to start doing an approval action on every parent permission slip. I think that would start a very slippery slope, a very precedent, so.
I agree. So then I will move to table the kite brother letter to parents and bring it into discussion. Hearing motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy, first policy is policy 3255, oh, wait, no. We have policy 7400, which is the miscellaneous procurement standards. There was just a strikeout that did not get taken care of before it was uploaded. There's no revisions to that, other than just crackle. Second one is financial management on the fund balance. That was correcting the legal reference, there was no change to the language within that policy. And then third one is the student dress. The irony is, this is the exact same policy, there was no language changes other than the delineation of what it meant with the bullet points. That's new, everything else in this policy was the same. It didn't get the, there's the last line on page one, states clothing exposing midriffs, rear midriffs, clothing with bowler tears, short shorts and short skirts will not be allowed. So, the recommendation is just to strike that sentence out, because it does conflict with the fact that we are allowing jeans with just, you know, ribs can't be above the mid thigh. So, we did not have the input from the parents, or the staff, I should say. When this went back to policy committee for just review as to what the frustration was, I don't know if the parents realized that the language necessarily did not change in this policy. Only thing that changed was adding the bullet points, and the bullet points were added because I believe Ms. Sexton, we spoke with principal Everland during that meeting. All right, I thought we spoke with him, I'm not sure if we spoke with another one, but we got input from staff and trying to understand, because you had said the shorts issue was that, you know, staff was, we, we say you can't wear shorts, but in the summer it gets hot, and everybody's wearing shorts, so, and we were trying to clean it up so that there was a little bit more meat to the policy with the bullet points, but no other language was changed within the policy. So, based on that and your feedback from the staff, do you feel that there's more modifications that need to be made to the policy that's where?
Well, and I, I know that you have it later on the agenda, so trustee Rosen may have more information from that email. I think the, the piece of the jeans and parents not being notified ahead of time because they only have a certain clothing allowance. I don't know if the board wants to open it up and get parent feedback at this point, and that would open up, get, I'm sure you'd get a ton of feedback at this point. I think most parents would agree with you about the ribs above the mid thigh. I think that the emails that I've seen have been about, tell us ahead of time before we go out and do summer clothes shopping.
Right, but the irony is the policy before stated closer to the rib at all. Right, so, that's, I guess that's where I'm struggling a little, and three quarters of reporters, two thirds of the staff say, don't change the policy at all, just leave it the way it is now. However, that being said, I think for this start of the year, I mean, for this year, I think it would be beneficial to put it out there to the parents to give feedback, to consider policy revision next year. I don't think it would be smart to change the policy.
Yes, I agree with, totally agree.
Yeah, it's, it's in all the student handbooks. Again, nothing was changed within this policy except the delineation of, actually, it was made more lenient, because like trustee Thompson said, the policy always stated clothing with holes or tears are not allowed. And after hearing, my understanding is, after hearing from the various, I guess, building administrators or whomever, teachers, I'm not sure, staff, they were having a hard time enforcing it because they said it was too vague.
Yeah.
Or there wasn't, there was, there were boundaries with that.
Right, yeah, so, I guess that's where the bullet points could be.
Right.
Everybody's arms are different lengths, and some of the fingertips are hard to reinforce, and the policy indicated that nobody could wear shorts.
Right.
And that's why I brought it to you.
Right, so, I, I did see some good feedback on the staff input that I think could definitely be addressed for next year. I don't think it would be beneficial or prudent to change the policy that really wasn't changed this year.
Okay, I'm gonna put my parent hat on.
Yes, sir.
The skirt, like, specifying knee length.
Right.
Is different than that was last, previous policy. Because it was, so that is different.
It is.
And even, you know, I, I've heard a lot about this.
I bet.
Knee length skirts.
It was always the fingertips, and it was really more, you know, left some discretion, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I've been...
And I think we came up with knee length because the arm length was so varied that, but...
It was hard to enforce.
Right.
As well.
Right.
Input that we got from staff.
So.
And now it's hard to find knee length skirts.
We talked about that, too.
So. So, what would your suggestion be, Rob? I mean, how do we?
Well, there, like you said, the, the sheep is assed, but it also, you know, everybody's kind of throwing their hands up in the air, and, I mean, it also states in there that the principals have discretion, have their due force, and everybody's like, I mean, it gives guidelines.
Yep.
And it also spells out the individual principles. I mean, it could be different for middle school, and it could be different for high school, and I, I think that, that the principals need to take some latitude, but, you know, that's my opinion. Again, you know, it was a topic of conversation and controversy in the household.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, you know, that, like I said, you just can't really back it out.
Right.
Because it's already set in place. I would, I would, you know, say that my interpretation, the way that it does read, is that principals ultimately have discretion on how they interpret and enforce.
Correct.
So, I, and I still think...
Which is always been the policy.
And I, I think that's important, but, you know, yeah. That's my opinion.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, no, I appreciate it. I mean, you could only do what you could do, right, if they're coming and saying, hey, we have body parts showing. You know, and it's sort of distracting when you have...
Obviously, you don't.
Yeah, right, you know, they're trying to conduct class, but everybody's paying attention to the body part showing. It's like, well, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's a balance.
We get to deal with...
You know, we're, we're still a public school and not, you know, a private school, and we have kids on, you know, extreme budgets, and, and you get a lot of different...
Yeah, I mainly got emails about the holes, that's what I got, was the holes. And I was like, oh, and then I did, because I wasn't at that particular meeting, so I had to do my own research, and I was like, oh, it is, it is sort of discrepancy there where it's like holes in the apples, but... Right, I didn't need things, and because there is a conflict within the policy itself, parts of no holes, and then below we're saying you can have a rib mid thigh, that is appropriate, I believe, to correct right now.
Yeah.
So that the policy is fluid.
Right.
But I don't really think we need to tackle too many other changes within the policy until next year, and I would really like to have parent feedback.
Yeah.
See what they...
That would be a great way to add to the survey.
And also, then you...
And also then you policy of having feedback, setting it up, getting feedback will help with this as well.
Yes. All right. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion on board policies as presented.
I'll move to approve the board policies as presented.
I'll send it as presented. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I'm not sure why 3255 was such a waste.
There was some public input that, and also, I'm not sure if there's that public input.
Yeah, I think we already did. It was just, it was what I said, that most of the parents I heard from, you know, and I did answer the gallant her emails in here, was about the tears and trying to explain them, how it all happened. But I think we addressed that appropriately. Okay. Nothing improving. Okay, so there's no. We do have a policy we do need to renumber. It is policy 7010, federal department and suspension. You need to renumber that policy to 7455. That's the only thing that has been addressed on this policy. I will entertain a motion regarding renumbering of board policy 7010 to 7455.
Is there just four?
Yes, it's, we're trying to, because the previous board adopted the ISBA models, where this falls in, their model policy is slightly outwashed. So we're just bringing it into alignment so that when we need to find it, the policy, we can.
I'll move to approve renumbering of board policy as presented.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the stipends. We've been presented with the stipends. Is this for the entire year or just for?
So this is the majority of them. And I do have a couple duplicates on the last page. I was up at nine hour trying to get this in. I just want to assure you, there will not be duplicate stipends.
Okay.
I probably have missed some. And so some could probably show up possibly at a next meeting. Plus we do have, I mean, stipends are requested throughout the year as well. And so, I mean, I could possibly be bringing more at a later date.
Okay.
But for Chair Thompson, these are the ones from the, and trustee Grissom was in our IBD process. There is the extra pay for extra duty. There's the extra duty from the negotiated agreement and then was just a second pot. And then there is the leadership stipend dollars to come from the state. So this, all three of those are on here.
Okay.
Except for what HR Director Cunningham's talking about, the extra pay for extra duty. That is one of the things that's in the negotiated agreement and trustee Grissom was in on this discussion. There may be some principals that hold back their money because they're waiting to see if later in the year there's something, that money is allocated to do something outside of contract hours to work with kids.
Okay.
You know, cougar patch, the gardens, you know, anything cross-country. We just have the elementary cross-country, something that they may want to do with kids outside of ours. And it may, there are principals that have held that money. So to her point that there may be some other requests that trickle in.
Okay.
From that pot of money. But we have expended all of the leadership stipends. As you can see, we have a huge PBIS training and a huge IRE training, which is the majority this year. And just as a reminder, the mentor money is not here, that is not paid out until May. All of our mentor stipends for our teachers and our mentors, and we do have nearly 16 protégés this year. Those aren't paid out to the end of the year until the mentors complete that work with their protégés. And that will be seen in the May, in the May board, in the May board book to be paid out in June.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
The only thing I would like to see, although I appreciate all the work that you took just to get this done, was a total.
Is that something that you would like me to email you? I mean, I have the Excel sheet that I can do that.
Oh. Yeah, that would probably be good, if you don't mind. That would be, I don't want to put more work on you, it's just my own brain thing here.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not quite sure, I mean, how beneficial that would be to you because of the different funds, like the leadership funds that is paid out of, that it's sometimes paid out of the general fund, just the various places that they're coming from. But I can most certainly just pull to the bottom if you want.
Yeah, whatever the, if it's not that simple, that's fine, we can wait till next time. I was just curious what the total was of all these stipends ever being paid out.
Okay.
So all that was it.
All right. HR Director Cunningham, when you send it out, could you send it out to all the board members, please?
Sure.
All right. So then, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion regarding stipends.
I'll move to approve the stipends as presented.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to surplus items. Looks like we have a recommendation from Lakeland High School. Which you would surplus their little car so that they can get an ATV.
Smooth gem car.
So. I was just gonna say, with the fact that they're wanting to purchase an updated ATV, is the district putting any funding towards this, or is this what the high schools do not have?
Yeah, the high school's using all their student activity funds or maybe they make some donations and they want to have this be part of the mix of a four-year graded ATV. We're looking at used ones and just, per, actually I have codes in our policy. When, you know, a certain item we're gonna surplus gets a certain amount, we have to go to the board first. And this is high enough, actually, our estimated value that we can either do it in auction or a sealed bid. So we'll advertise in the paper and see what we get.
Have you bid on it? My great.
Yeah, you can bid on it, we'll have it, sure. Yeah. If you bid 5,000, I bet you get it.
Okay. So then I'll entertain a motion regarding surplus stipends. I'll approve surplus stipends as presented.
Second, the motion.
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the U5 research proposal. One question that I had, Dr. Meyer, in reviewing this, is with this research that they'd like to do within our district, what benefits are a district to receive from it?
Yeah, usually any sort of body of knowledge, any research is just adding to the body of knowledge. Typically doesn't directly affect our district, except for adding to the body of knowledge that then someday may help teacher preparation programs. This one is specifically regarding creativity and measuring creativity. Could it help future teachers instill more creativity into the classroom? Secondary benefit maybe, but a direct benefit is only if. And that's why it's always up to the board according to policy. If we always say no, I'm not, I'm neutral on this. If, I've been really pro some of the proposals and I've been against some of the proposals that I've brought to the board over the years. I'm neutral on this one. It is very low impact, it's a very small window to do the survey. But this one I'm neutral on. I just tell the board that if we don't ever help do that, doctoral students, having been one myself, it is helpful to find districts that are willing to have, get that information. But then also, we don't want to do every single one because then we're constantly the ones who are always saying yes. So I can see both sides of the story on that.
What was the last research proposal presented to you?
It's, oh, Christie's not up there. It was probably, Lisa, it would be three or four years ago. Three, four, it was three. Yeah. And that was one that, it's been a while since that one, there was, I don't know if you remember, trustee Adams. Yeah, she came and spoke to the board, yeah. So I haven't brought any in the last couple of years into, and this one seemed very straightforward. I mean, it seems low as half. But again, I am neutral on this one and it is up to the board on how you feel about it.
Maybe administering the test or the survey or will it be falling on our staff?
Yeah, it would, my understanding is that the teachers would just say, okay, now we're gonna, they would send it to the teacher, please give it at this date, it should take 20 minutes, here's what. And then it would go back to the people through a survey. And there's no personal identifiable, personally identifiable information on it.
What age do you want to give, okay, 212, everybody?
Is it K3 or is it?
No, it's K3.
Yeah, this is in the actual internal letter, which we were looking to partner schools around the state to survey students in grades four through 12.
Oh.
We are mindful of teacher and student time to endeavor to make them question short. They need to apparently be both teacher and students.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's better, four through 12.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably adjust the question.
Four through 12.
20 minutes.
In K3.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. And it's only 20 hours, so if, by the time you give it and explain it, I mean, it should be, my guess would be less than 15 minutes, but.
Any other questions?
I think as long as the parents are aware, knowing that they, they don't have a problem.
Yeah, and they have an opt-out too, so it'll be, I mean, at least the grade.
Yeah.
Parents and students.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't remember how our policy reads, but anyway, the parents want to allow their children to participate. But. That they have to, so this, so what they gave us then is this example is just an example. The does say K212 and it doesn't have, or really other things they said they were gonna do. Gender, age, grade level and ethnicity. So how do we go about doing this, Dr. Meyer? Just send something out to the parents and say, if they're gonna do this on this day, if you don't want your child.
And here's a copy of the question, actually see a copy of the question here.
Okay. I think it's, they will keep their policy.
Any further questions or discussion?
I have none.
Then I'll entertain a motion regarding U5 research proposal.
I'll move to approve the U5 research proposal.
I'll move to that. Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items. We have the regional ISBA follow-up. Okay, we have a resolution packet. And here would probably be a good place to discuss the yes, the table training and convention opportunities. So.
In due all fairness, I think that having trustee major in all training discussions probably washes.
We do have a minor time constraint, but if there's any discussion around, if you mentioned long or late, they will spend some, it does get, so it's just an FYI.
You know, what was the cost difference?
$50.
$50 per person. And that is money that's already allocated, I mean, that's the $6,600 that we get from.
Like I mentioned, you would not get a full reimbursement. I believe they told me that there's a partial reimbursement for the registration, but not full. The training is reimbursed.
And then we take the rest out of the general. And they did notify us today that there's online, yeah, option, which is, we did ever check this morning. So that's nice for people who don't want to fly or want to still participate.
Do we know what the cost is?
Same.
It's okay. For Lynn's nuts and bolts for trustees training, but it appears that it's only for new trustees, it's not for.
Correct.
Okay. How much is her training?
That has to be done through ISBA and that's usually like an add-in to.
Okay. Okay. All right. I suppose it would be beneficial if the three of us could give the clerk direction on whether or not we're going to be convention, be it virtually or in presence, in person. And then that way, if the other two can get her input prior to the 22nd, then we would save potentially a hundred dollars by going with the $600 instead of $650. I do know that this had been brought up a few board meetings ago, and I believe at that time we all kind of need some indication that we were all going. But then.
Yeah, I will.
Continue, so. I won't be attending the training. It is, I have some other things I have to attend to, which I can't squeeze in, like I mentioned.
Yeah. But would you be interested in doing it online? Because that's what I, I can't, I don't want to find them either, but I'm thinking some of those topics would be good.
Yeah, maybe online, like we did last time, you know, we picked certain things and that, but I just can't fit in the going away and doing all that. But the virtual, I may be, I was looking to see. If I had to talk to you about.
So Dr. Meyer, do I understand that you can now go to attend in person? Or is that still a question?
Oh, it's still a question, but I, I'm waiting to see what the board says, but I would be more, board obviously can do whatever they want, but I, just so that I can attend all of it and not have to fly down. I would love to do virtual so you can actually participate in each topic instead of having to pick one each time.
It states that there's 50 live workshops and over 20 pre-recorded. That's interesting. What I would like to find out is, I mean, I, the only way I could possibly attend it. What I would like to find out is, I mean, the only way I could possibly attend it is virtually. But I would like to find out if they're going to allow access, if they're going to do what they did last year, which was record everything, so that you could go back and watch.
I did, I did make sure that I have my statement correct. I, we recently got this information, this action, and ISBA did respond to me. They will have pre-recorded workshops available on HUBA. And they'll also record some of the live workshops to add to HUBA for the attendees to view up to six months after convention.
I'm supposed to, that's great.
That's exactly.
Much, that's 30 days.
Yeah.
Because I went back, so I was like, why didn't they say it? Because sometimes we can't, it's like for your own notice, that the recording was already gone at the end of the last one. But, oh, yeah, that's great. Yeah, I would definitely be interested in the virtual. Me as well.
So since all three of them said that, Janelle, that's why I'm going to be interested in it as well.
Okay.
All right, and then I, just a quick fact, I will connect with trustee Bane and me and the major to get their consistent on, but I would like to.
And what did we decide on clerk training? Is that a different agenda? Of course, I've seen, I'm getting confused.
It's all, yeah, I think it's all together, I mean, if we go back to the memo inside that memo. Yeah, was everything, yeah, was the convention and then the different work slash clerk training based upon ours. It was the LSU service update, the superintendent evaluation, you know, those same trainings.
So the only way that I can get training that is reimbursable is if it's locked in with some board grant of training?
I, which I feel is beneficial. Although I feel like it's more important that you get the training, whether we, I mean, because we're going to be updating that for reimbursement money anyway. I feel like this last one, it was, because the civil deputy prosecuting, I don't know who this is, but it feels to me like that person would know what they're talking about, and especially because trustee Bane is in that line of work. He's willing to provide public records and request training for the board clerk and superintendent. Official requests from the board needs to be made to vary, we queue, we queue. I'm very interested in Janelle and I participating, and if any board members could, but I would be very interested in Janelle and I, if the board would let us write a letter coming from the board chair, and Janelle could write it that you would sign. I think it would be timely that if she and I could find a date and then ask the board if they wanted to attend, they could also.
I think if you could reach out to trustee Bane and find out what, maybe if she could get a little heads up on him as far as what.
The agenda?
Yeah, yeah, like what's, how much, I mean, he says something during the day, can we do in the evening?
Okay.
What the parameters are, so then we can draft a letter, some requests, and hopefully have it happen sooner rather than later. That would be great. Any other conversation? Not.
I'm curious.
Would be great. Next, we have a first read on curriculum supplemental resources. So we have tech. Is that? Is that tech, like, just through all the different schools?
So the computer lab, tech, there are certain things they use throughout all of the districts, so they just wanted to make sure that those were on there. So these would be at every school.
Okay. I couldn't get it to open up earlier, so.
On this doc.
If you weren't here, like, if you tried to, or else.
Yeah, well, yeah, my preparation for the board meeting, I couldn't get it to open, so.
But it works when you're here.
Yeah. It, that happened on a few of my, on a few of the attachments, not all of them, but a few.
Wish I had understood why that was happening.
Is that you have? I download it as a P, yeah, so that it's adjustable, unless it's a size, maybe, because it says a large.
And as you notice, if you go lower than I specified, it's specific to the library. These are all new books that we would like to bring to the library.
At Garwin and at.
John Brown.
John Brown, okay.
And then that was one.
And this is the first read, so they still have time to look at these again anyways.
So we may have questions at the next meeting.
I just saw this book on social, I was looking at that book, Peace, Love, and Red Shoes.
I saw that on Sunday.
She's the author.
Our library next door.
Our library, that's what I saw. Our library.
Oh, maybe that's what it was, okay, I was like, I just saw that.
If you buy it, I bought a copy and then she signed it for me.
Oh, okay, so Timberlake Middle and Timberlake High School, those are library books, I think they would like to add to the libraries. And then for Lakeland Middle School, the trio is a grant that we actually received. And this program starts with the middle school kids and teaches them just how to be organized and maximize their learning. It teaches executive functioning skills. And then at the high school level, we're working actually with their Mountain View kiddos, students on preparing for life after high school. And so there, there's a counselor that works with them on accessing scholarships and how to fill out the FAFSA and all of the pieces that are needed to move beyond high school. So it's a great program, fully funded for us. So this is just the actual materials that we're asking to be able to use with the kids at the middle school. And then SCAM scopes is a science curriculum that they're interested in using to help supplement while we're without a.
Just curious on the trio, it takes me to a dream catcher curriculum site that offers printed and digital curriculum.
It's the dream catchers, that, that's what they're looking at, and that's their executive functioning.
Would we be looking at getting printed curriculum or additional?
Oh, that could be that specific.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sure with girl books, it would probably be good.
There are some teachers though who like to peel the paper for executive functioning skills. I know, you don't like to hear that, but there are a few of them.
Does anybody have any questions? I think they'll.
Thank you.
We do have a first read on policy 5265, this is a brand-new policy, we did not have previously, it's the employees' responsibilities regarding student harassment and intimidation. It's one of parents, 3295, but this is a brand-new policy, so all of which is new. And this policy is to be handled annually or to be distributed annually.
Yeah, it's one of those that would be referenced on the annual notices.
Yeah.
Were required to do, but we didn't have it, so ISBA's.
It needs to be distributed annually and reviewed with employees, so. Does anybody have any questions? We do have public records process, we do need to come up with sort of a procedural response for public records requests, because we don't have anything in place. We could get some great suggestions tonight. And I think sending is also some samples or examples of what she was referring to, so I mean, once we get those, then we have something to work with. Janelle, do you have any input on the public records request, or do you wait for the aggregate form?
Probably.
Kind of, okay.
I will, I would like to compile the notes, the, so the higher recommendations and then.
Yes, okay. But as the custodian of records, I think it would be important, because you've about a few, since you've been on board and. See what you, or your thought processes about with regard to that.
Yes.
And then, you have correct documentation attached to agendas. I thought you would attach them to that.
I did.
It's not there anymore. Okay, well. What, I'm sorry, I'm cooking, she can be a little fast, because things pop up into that. Well, it had been brought up, it had brought up a few times about when people go online and they pull up the agenda, what can they see? And I know that when you're looking at past board, board agendas, what are people seeing? And a lot of people are seeing nothing except a bunch of words. And so Chrissy had stated numerous times that, you know, when we did this merger, links got lost and whatnot. So Janelle had done a thing, a memo, and had confirmed that, yes, we go in and links were undone, so that people can't see anything. So it's my understanding you're going to work on going back through every single meeting to make sure that people can access the information when they're going to work.
Is there not an easier way to do that? Can we not get ahold of the software company and say, hey, excuse me?
Chrissy did address that, that the people at Word Book and they said, no, there's not, I'm looking at right for them to fix that.
That seems something.
If I speed on, if they could write a script and update the database.
What year was that?
Last year? Actually, it was before that, because apparently, well, yeah, because it's been going on for quite some time. And Chrissy has repeatedly said, well, things got jumbled, lost, whatever. But we, we got on Word Book, but then they updated it, and then we did the big update last year.
Right.
But when, the first time we updated is when it happened to K-Ware, and then we updated the big update and, you know, you just, there's no links to anything.
Right.
And people can't see anything, and that's not appropriate. So we need to resolve that sooner rather than later, but it also isn't going to be like a whole-time day job, going through clicking everything. But if you can incorporate that into your daily tasks, I don't know how much time you want to spend on it, but I have been. I'm sure you have been.
I got through probably twelve plus one day, so, but then I have to figure out how. For some reason, there's a whole syllabus that are shown that they're not complete, so I don't know if I can, so I don't know if there are, it's just depending on if it's attached, so that that's a whole nother.
Oh, wow. Okay. We just want to make sure the public has access to.
Diligently working to rectify that situation.
Correct, thank you. Any other thing?
You need any presentations or things for me?
It's, it's just, yeah. I mean, I am just baffled. I mean, I know that they might not have any code button. I don't like them just giving the button, I understand that, but I just can't believe that they don't have the capability to. Update databases basically to set.
So it went, it defaulted to voting number above, so I would have to go through and identify each file that is not, that could be public, so I don't know enough about computers, but to be able to write a script to only identify.
No, that would be them, it would not be you, it would be the software.
Well, I understand. But how do we identify the files? That would be.
Well, I don't know how, it should be quite simple, because you have that the agenda is already in blocks. The only thing that would not be available to the public typically would just be those items that are, you know, the HR.
No, the HR.
Yeah, the HR stuff and the executive session, I mean, depending on how it's stored, I mean, it's really the only criteria you have. Everything else belongs to the public.
Well, maybe you could call them and have that conversation with them, ask them if they can write a script to assist.
Or something.
Yeah. I can't imagine that we're the only school district that ran into this problem. Maybe we're the only school district that's taken this long to resolve it, but it needs to be resolved.
We're seeing pretty antiquated.
And then the next item for discussion is audio/video for being, so here's where the language came from ISBA with regard to. No formal motion was ever made regarding our audio and video live streaming, or whatever it comes at. And we are not under any requirement to continue. However, we should identify at our annual meeting what we're going to do. And we did not do that at the start of this year, because we were still kind of juggling the whole, what are we, or what are we not doing? So I think it would be beneficial for us to maintain, that was both. And then at the annual meeting in January, we should identify if we're going to make changes to the online presence. We're going to just allow people to attend and not record, if we're going to continue to record, what we're going to do. But that's my opinion, I don't know what everybody else feels with regards to that. Right. Right.
They're back sending that to workshops and every.
Right, right. With that being said, I do think we need to have, well, six, possibly seven microphones, or eight, actually, eight. That would include the two of you, that podium, and then each one of the trustees. Because the general consensus is, everybody in now only hear me, because the microphone is right there. Unless y'all are going to start yelling, which is really not what you do, they're not, people can't really hear you, they can't hear people when they're presenting. And not wanting to, you know, go out and knock up the tech bill, I think we should be able to give each one of the trustees, yourself, the clerk, and the presenter a microphone. And I don't know if it's beneficial to do something wireless, because that is there, I don't want people to turn off the cords, but I also don't think we need to, you know.
Yeah, I think the wire usually that you have are better. And the other thing is that everybody who isn't talking has to mute theirs.
Okay.
Because otherwise it will get garbled, so it will be used to be on and off. I mean, if you look at the court lane, board meetings, and of course, they have more of a set stage, but, you know, you're not. a set stage, but, you know, when you're not talking, you're turning your mic off.
Okay.
So that'll just be, some you just have to work on, because it happens, you know, it's over. When they start talking and nobody can hear.
Well, I don't know if there's other types of devices that can pick up sound better than the little mic, I mean.
Well, there are bigger Polycom mics and stuff like that. You know, there's a lot of different solutions. Obviously, the individual mics will be the clearest for the person speaking, and if you don't have the other mics on, then it becomes, I mean, that's how a lot of organizations do it.
Okay.
But, you know, we could research our problems.
Okay.
Then we'll follow, Tim Walz now followed through with tech.
Okay.
Since he was a tech director before he has internal knowledge.
Okay, and then if you could just sort of present us what, what's available and the cost, because I don't think it needs to be astronomical.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be super significant, we definitely have, you know, the dollars that make it work.
Well, but I also don't know if we have other of these hang now, that we could just like add them.
No, we don't.
I don't believe so.
We don't, okay. Well, then you have to have something to add them to, because they'll have to be fed to one computer and, you know.
Yeah, you might, you know, they have little hubs that sort of go and stuff like that, yeah.
Well, I guess then if I could just, if we, if the board could see what we need to make it happen, aside from just my simple solution of just give everybody a mic.
Yes.
Inclusive of the podiums, so that the podium's mic as well, so people can hear. And then we will address this at the annual meeting. The other item for discussion is our affiliations with the Chamber of Commerce. It's my understanding we're only affiliated with two, with Rathbones and with Spirit Lakes, we're not affiliated with Apple's. I don't know if you go to them or not.
No, I didn't know there was an Apple Chamber. So I was always going, I just been trying to be involved in every, like I go to the baby, community council, I'm there once a year, since I've been there here, because they don't have a chamber, then a community council, I go to Spirit Lake, Chamber, Rathbones Chamber, if Apple, I was going to the city council meetings once a week, once a month until COVID hit, and then we weren't allowed to go, obviously, since this board. But starting those back up again, but I'm happy to go to Apple Chambers. I will reach out to Lori or the mayor in Apple and ask who the contact is and sign up, find out who that is.
What is our, what is the district's benefit to being affiliated with the Chambers of Commerce? I'm just curious, I mean, I don't understand.
Well, a change, the, the goal of a chamber is to help the community come together, helping businesses, education, city, all of the people living in that community to come together for the best interest, to help that community thrive. So every, every chamber I'm on, the education is a big piece of it, because in order for businesses to do well and communities to thrive, they want the education in that community to be a top-notch education, because they will help solicit folks moving in that might want to move into the community and or live and work in that community, because the education's good, so in my opinion, we play an integral part in both of the chambers that I've been on for the last six years.
Okay.
I mean, I could go into a lot of detail if you want.
No, I was just curious.
Let me pass, I think, is because I've been at the chamber meetings, people have asked me questions, there's a lot of meeting people coming in, helping people with questions, I've done reports, annual reports, I've been stating the community, updating, it's a very, it's a lot of positive PR of people in the community. There's monthly networking with Rathbones, and then there's a monthly one, networking, it's a small group at Spirit Lake, but being an integral part, we're helping the website, our students in the program, particularly in high school, are now helping to run, in lieu of dues, are helping to run website and create a working, like real-life experience for our students. We have a student of the month, our student, they were actually the high school student that is an intern with this chamber, we have a student of the month program that is through the chamber.
Okay, well, no, because I know you are actively involved, I've just never heard anything. And so that's why, I mean, I know the expense for dues and just not really knowing what the district's benefit is, other than I get the whole actively involved within the community from my perspective of what the chamber is, I, it's hard to see what's, what's the governmental entity doing in a business development, a business.
Yeah, I think maybe it's kind of outdated knowledge, I mean, outdated theory of it's just for the business community, Post Falls, Coral Lane, both of those secret tenants are involved with their chamber, and it's really kind of a bigger connection, I think, than just business, I think it's, the city is also in the chamber in Rathbones, not so much in Spirit Lake right now, there's, there's an election coming up, but there's, anyway. Well, there's, and there's politics everywhere, but there is growth issues in Spirit Lake specifically. But I feel like me being there, I can head off some of the questions of the past they asked me about, and instead of people starting rumor mill, oh, the school district's doing this, I feel like I can clarify, definitely explain why we're doing what we're doing. I think also I've created a lot of partnerships with the community members of like, oh, hey, we have, why don't we come and do this, or why do we, okay, can you help with seeing here, volunteer options, donation options? I feel like a lot of positivity has come out of it, and again, it's usually a couple hours a month that I dedicate, but I also would be, would love to add Apple's if that's, if they need, do you know if they need a month basis?
Yes, but the COVID and every, it's all sort of, you know, whatever happens with the city, and then, you know, the Apple Chamber is more like you're saying, more of a community service focus, so they really have like five major events of the year, and that's all of their focuses right now, and they're, it's more of a, I can be option.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go to that, I will reach out, find out, trustee Grissom and I are going to the Apple City Council meeting on October 19th together, because there is some right-of-way, and trustee Grissom can speak to it, but she wouldn't observe, I've observed several times, and she went up to observe the parking and the traffic flow at pickup and drop-off.
Oh, for Apple.
For Apple Elementary, and there is some new land that is no longer right-of-way the city owns, so we have, are going to go out and talk together, that we would love to, you know, some committee to help be part of the solution, and we're going to that city council meeting on October 19th together.
Okay.
Which, Apple Elementary has, they do, they have, they have a pretty good time, you know, they got drop-off rate, and the concern has been, at least points to me, more of a safety issue, the way the buses and the cars and people piling up and all this sort of thing, but now there may be, like Dr. Meyer said, there may be a solution.
Okay. Well, I guess, Dr. Meyer, if you could kind of keep us in the loop, with the actions and what's going on within the chamber, chambers of the various cities, that'd be great.
Yeah, I have been sharing the, let me know if you want more, I have been sharing the minutes, there's no minutes at the monthly luncheon for the chamber, there's just a presenter and then networking afterwards, but I've been sharing the minutes with the board update of the Spirit Lake, they're, we wrap, but they are the minutes, and the ones from the financials and the ones for the Rathbones, I've been sharing those.
Right, but what I, I guess what I'm more looking for is like you come back and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we're doing, or this is what's being done for our kiddos, or like the, the student involvement, no clue what that's going on. So just that type of connection, so that we're kept in the loop and, and the community's informed.
Yeah, I will, I would definitely do that, I can elaborate, that was in the minutes from the, from the Spirit Lake Chamber, like most of that stuff will be documented in the minutes, but sometimes there are connections that aren't in the minutes, so I will point that out.
Well, and, and the reality is, the public doesn't have access to that, so.
Oh.
Unless they do.
Right.
So.
Could you just talk about board update?
Board update is.
That's what she's saying.
I mean, I mean, at board meetings.
I'm just interested in very high-level things, like the little photographs we're talking about and that kind of thing, you know, or if there's a, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the, what the narrative is or whatever, but I imagine it changes like when there's a levy about it or something like that, I think that's probably.
Well, I mean, we spend taxpayer dollars to invest in relationships, so I think that it's beneficial to come back to the public and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we've done, or this is what's, the connection with us is, with us being the school district, so. All right, that being said, is there any more input or comment on the Chamber of Commerce affiliations?
Yeah.
That concludes tonight's meeting. So. Oh, do we do a report?
Oh.
No, I mean.
The thing is so long.
I did want to introduce you to Jennifer, she is entering, I took you to board update, she's been training with Chrissy.
Hi, Jennifer.
Yes, trustee Chrissy. Board chair talks, and then the trustee.
Yes.
I mean, it's.